I'm in your seats, I guess I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the Center for the Arts for providing us their facility for the setup, for the mics, the much friendlier level of noise that we can all listen to at least here and here versus other sites that we would have to choose from here. That being said, these are the candidates for the two positions on the Three Lakes School Board. We will start with opening statements, short, strong. Jeff, you are first.
Alright, I drew the short straw. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Volk and I am running for a seat on the Three Lakes School Board. First off, I'd like to thank all that were involved with organizing this candidate for today. It's a great opportunity for the people of our community to meet the various individuals that are running for school board and for town chairman. I also understand that this is a difficult time in our community with the tragic events that have happened recently in our downtown area, so I again thank all of you that took time on your busy schedules to attend this event tonight.
Don't interrupt Paul. Oh, come on.
This is the first time I've ever been told I did not, um... So, for me, I have one reason why I'm running for a seat on this Three Lakes School Board, and that's because I want kids to be successful. For the past 20 years, my passion has been to help kids be successful. I have been a middle school teacher, an elementary teacher, and currently I'm a math interventionist. Along with that, I have been a coach and a basketball and football official for those years as well, all the while helping kids be successful. It is no secret that this Three Lakes School District is a very successful school district. Yearly, it ranks high in academic accomplishments, also providing the students of Three Lakes and Sugar Camp numerous opportunities to better themselves as a person. Along with that, the Three Lakes School District has staff members, families, and community members that strive for our district to be one of the best in the state. So my goal if elected is to use my years of educational experience to help all stakeholders continue the tradition of helping kids be successful. Thank you.
Carrie?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
No.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Carrie Volk. I am married to Charlie, who was born and raised in Three Lakes. We have three children, Carly, who is nineteen, eighteen, sorry, almost nineteen years old, Courtney, who is sixteen, and Callie, who is thirteen. Three Lakes has always been a special place for me and my family, and we kind of consider this our second home before making this our permanent residence. So when Charlie and I had the opportunity to move here nineteen years ago, we didn't hesitate at that opportunity to raise our children here and have them educated in the Three Lakes School District. So my two daughters are currently enrolled in the district, and my oldest daughter graduated last year and is currently a student at UW-Madison. And I'm proud to say that the Three Lakes School District prepared her well, not only to make the dean's list her first semester there, and hopefully her second semester, but also to be a well-rounded individual and a productive citizen. I have been in the field of education for 21 years now. I'm currently a speech pathologist, and I also have my master's in educational leadership. So with my unique positions and my experience, I bring a wealth of information to the school board, not only as an educator, but as a taxpayer and as a parent. I strive to provide all students with great opportunities and the best education possible. So as a school board member for the past six years, I've helped to make good decisions for our taxpayers within the best interests of our students, and I'm looking forward to serving another term.
Carrie?
Thank you. I want to thank the library board. This is a great venue here and a great opportunity for all of us. I'm born and raised in Antioch. Went to Marquette, graduated from there, went into the Navy thirty years later, got out of the Navy, retired, and we started looking around, my wife and I, four children, started looking around for a place to stay and live and set some tentacles into the ground, and lo and behold, we found Three Lakes. I want to tell you, it was the best decision that we ever made coming here. This is a great town, it's got great people, we have a great school, and it's just an absolute home run, and we're all here from Three Lakes. I got involved in the school system nineteen years ago. We had two grandchildren living with us, and they were going to the Three Lakes School. And I got involved with, as a seventh grade football coach, assistant in the seventh grade, then the eighth grade, and then I helped the varsity for a couple of years as well. I was also a substitute teacher during that time, so I've spent this time in the building as well as the last twelve years that I've been in the school. In addition to that, I got involved six years ago in the Wisconsin Association of School Boards where I was elected by the 21 schools in District Two of the WASB. And I've been involved in that now heavily for the last six years. That's in addition to the things I do in Three Lakes. By the way, a lot of hours are paid, so it's hard to get through that sometimes. Anyway, I was a WASB president in 2017, which was the year before last, and I got to travel extensively statewide, I got to travel nationally, so I've been involved in school boards and school board decisions, particularly in funding, for the last six years. I really believe in strong governance for schools. That is that the school board sets policy and the administrator carries it out, and I believe strongly in advocacy, and we are all should be advocates for our school.
Thank you. First question, Jeff. What would be the most important attributes that you would bring to the school board were you to be elected?
The attributes that I would bring are twenty years of experience in education. I have a bachelor's degree in elementary education. I also have a master's degree in educational leadership. So, I, like Carrie, I have a unique perspective how schools operate from the inside out. I know how, you know, how to work with kids, how we work with staff members, how we work with administrators, how we work with school boards, and just the fine, the inner workings of schools, I have that experience. So I believe that that would give me a very helpful, for the Three Lakes School District, to continue them on their path to success and continue on the initiatives that they are working on.
Carrie, what do you feel would be the most important attributes that you would bring to the board were you to be elected?
Well, as I alluded to in my opening statement, I've been in the field of education for 21 years now with various experiences, not only in speech pathology. I've dabbled in some educational leadership opportunities that I've had in the Rhinelander School District. So I have a unique, a unique set of experiences that I can offer to the Three Lakes School District. Not only knowing what it takes to provide successful opportunities for our students, but also as a parent in knowing how those transfer to our students and have those successes, you know, happen for our kids. I'm a lifelong learner, I'm constantly learning, so I'm always trying to learn new things and new initiatives that we can bring to our schools to make our students successful.
Carrie, what would be the most important attributes that you would bring to the board were you to be elected?
Well, I bring leadership and knowledge. Thirty years in the Navy, spent a year in Vietnam, I commanded about eleven undersailers and a hundred and fifty small craft. I've seen a lot, I've been a lot of places, I've done a lot of things. And, and in particular, I'm really interested in the funding portion of school boards in the state, in how we allocate funding, where we get funding, why we should have the funding, what programs should we invest in, and that sort of thing. And I really enjoy looking at all that stuff, and I have the background and experience to do that.
Thank you. Carrie, you're first. What are the major issues that you feel confront the board in this coming year, and what issues would you prioritize?
Well, I think that, I mean, we always look at our enrollment numbers. Even though our enrollment is up from last year, I think one area that concerns me is students leaving our district to go to another district. So a priority for me is keeping our kids here. Of course, you know, increasing our open enrollment numbers are the kids coming in, but also, I think it's very important to keep our kids here in the district and, you know, show them what we have to offer them, and find out exactly why they're leaving our district.
Carrie, what issues do you feel are confronting the board in the coming year, and what would you prioritize?
Well, I think Carrie hit a home run with that answer. I'm not sure you're aware, but for every kid positive, we get an additional $7,500 into our school. Everyone that leaves, we have to pay that other school district that amount of money. Obviously, we want it to be positive because we want to be money ahead, and we don't want to be sending taxpayer money, our taxpayer money, to Northland Pines and/or to Rhinelander. This funding is a serious thing. We have a new administration in Madison now. We have a new administrator coming into Three Lakes. Times are going to be difficult this year, there's going to be a lot of difficulties down, down in the Madison area, and I think with working with the WASB, that's going to be the number one priority, is getting down there and trying to get money sorted out, protecting money for the small schools like Three Lakes in northern Wisconsin.
And Jeff, what are the major issues that you feel are confronting the board in the coming year, and how would you or which ones would you prioritize?
Like both Carrie and Terry said, you know, keeping kids here and then bringing more students here is a priority. Along with that, school safety is a huge issue in the United States and quite honestly in the world. So keeping ahead of the safety of our students is gotta be a prior, number one priority of everyone involved. And what, you know, the, the keeping ahead of the curve to make sure we are on the cutting edge of, of school safety. Also, I can believe is technology. Currently, Three Lakes has a one-to-one, fifth grade to twelfth grade with technology devices. We have to also continue that and expand that, you know, because of 21st century jobs that are out there, that we need to prepare our students for when they do leave us with a solid education from Three Lakes.
Carrie, what can the school board do to encourage attendance at its meetings, and what can it also do to increase transparency and communication to the public?
Well, let me take the last part first, because that's the easiest. We really go out of our way to try to keep everybody informed. The board realizes that we're responsible to you guys, we're responsible to the community, and it's our job to set the policies for the schools so that we have a number one school. We do have that, we want to continue that. As far as getting people to come to the meetings, unless we're going to cancel a sport, or we're going to have a new sport or something like that, that's the only way we get the attendance at our meetings. And we can't, well, we can't afford to do that at every meeting. So it's all we could do is say, hey, guys, come on, come on down, see what we're doing, join in the job we're here to do, let's do it together, and please come out and help us.
Jeff, what can the school board do to encourage attendance at its meetings and further increase transparency and communication to the public?
Well, I believe the, the school board does a really nice job of communicating what they are doing, whether it's on social media, just by the legal legality of setting out the agendas. Another, you know, just a small idea, like if you look in the back of the room, there's pastries and cookies, you know, that might be another way to help. It helps, you know. But, you know, I think the school district does a really nice job of keeping everyone informed. I, you know, sometimes you can provide all the information, the people have to have that want or need to come and be involved and see what's going on. You know, I'm not sure the school district can do a lot more than what they currently are.
Thank you. Now, you're first this time.
Oh, I'm sorry, Carrie. My bad. I have to follow up on Jeff's baking skills.
Yeah. What can the school board do to encourage attendance at meetings and increase transparency and communication to the public?
Anything different from what they've already said. I know we, typically, we don't have a lot of people in attendance at our meetings unless it's a hot topic, and then, you know, we have to hold a meeting in the auditorium, which is awesome. I'd love to see that every time. The more people involved, the better it is. I'm a strong believer that it takes a community to educate a child, so encouraging people to come to those meetings and find out what's going on, I think that's really beneficial for not only the school board, but for the staff, the students in our community. Like Jeff said, you know, you offer food, people will come usually, but that's not always the case either. I know people are very busy, and as a parent of three children, you know, the weeks, the school days get really busy, and then the evenings are busy too. However, I know we've had a lot of participation when we have kids present or students present at our meetings, so encouraging that to happen from here on out as well.
Thank you. Jeff, there's been a proposal brought before the current board to allow firearms on school property for events other than hunter's safety. What policy, if any, do you feel there should be to secure those firearms, and should there be firearms on school property in general?
Can you just repeat that question? I just want to make sure I heard the first part correctly.
There apparently has been a proposal brought to the current board to allow firearms on school property in addition to the hunter's safety courses that have always been held there. What policy or security for those firearms do you think is necessary, and should firearms be allowed on school property?
I think to clear that question up just a little bit, I think at the last school board meeting, they, the proposal, which didn't get acted on at the point, had to do with the trap team, and how they would transport firearms to the school and where they'd be secured. I know the school board from the last meeting is in the process of updating some of the language and some of the ideas in that policy. So, do I think guns should be on the school grounds? The obvious answer is that is no, but when it pertains to what I think the question refers to with the new trap club, the trap team, we, there has to be some policies so that students can participate in that activity, because that is going to draw a lot of students that are going to be, want to be involved in that. So I'm confident the school board, and hopefully myself, will be involved with that, adopting that policy and transforming it to the correct, where it needs to be.
Carrie, a proposal has been brought forth before the current board to allow firearms in school in addition to the current hunter's safety courses that are held on school property. Should firearms be allowed on school property, and what policy, if any, should be in place to secure those firearms?
Well, Jeff was correct that we were brought a draft of a policy to our last school board meeting. However, we didn't feel that it was all-inclusive, so we are continuing to work on that. I think guns should not be on school property, however, we are all about providing opportunities for our students. And if we are able to provide an opportunity for our students and get more students involved, I think we have to work through the policy and whatever it takes to make this happen for our kids. And we live in the Northwoods, and my, my girls shoot guns and have been through hunter's safety, and I think with the right means and opportunity, we can provide that for our students as well, and do it in a safe and secure manner.
Carrie, a proposal has been recently brought before the current school board to allow firearms on school premises in addition to those for hunter's safety. Should firearms be allowed on school property, and what policy, if any, should be in place for their security?
The general answer is no. However, when we purchased this 40 acres with the specific intent of making it a, one of the intents, making it a trap shooting situation opportunity for our kids, we've got to deal with the subject. First thing you have to do is make sure we're following all the laws. One of the questions I'd ask is, is I wasn't sure that the school boards have the power to trunk state law and just take what we want out of it, and so there's some research that has to be done. And it just, it wasn't done to start with, and we're working on that right now. But generally, no, except in this case, with that 40 acres, we've put ourselves in a situation where we're going to have to deal with it.
Thank you. Carrie, besides the trap shooting arrangement on the new property on County Highway Eight, what other plans would you have, or would you be in favor of, for the use of this property?
Well, I, I think, like you said, in favor, because it's just not my decision. I think, I think a committee with representation of several different entities needs to be involved in the planning of this. I think it's a great opportunity for students to have an outdoor education facility along the trap shooting range. From my experience in Rhinelander, the outdoor classroom there, teachers bring their class there, there's a curriculum that goes along with it. Those are great opportunities for students to have some hands-on learning in a different environment, as well as some team-building opportunities through like high ropes courses and those kind of things. So there's, there are really, the opportunities are endless with that property.
Thank you. Carrie, in, with regard to the property on Highway Eight, besides the trap shooting range, what other ideas would you have for the development and use of that property?
Well, I think there's going to be a lot of study that's going to go on. We're very fortunate, we're getting a new district administrator, Terry Mayne, she's been hired, and her husband turns out runs the forest down in the Boss House School District. So she's got a lot of stuff and a lot of information and a lot of excitement, so I think we're going to get the right people to help us look at it in the right directions and make sure that we, when we do this thing, we do it deliberately, we do it correctly. And we'll have the help and support of our new district administrator to do it.
Jeff, besides the trap shooting range, what other ideas would you have for the development and usage of the property on County Highway Eight?
Having a school forest opens up endless opportunities for students that might not be that college-bound student, giving the opportunity for forest management, water management, just endless opportunities. And Three Lakes being in the Northwoods, it's a must, you know, they need to have a school forest. And I, I know the new district administrator, Terry, was instrumental in the CAVOP, which is our, which is the outdoor classroom in Rhinelander. She's instrumental in her position currently as the curriculum director in molding what goes on out there, and I'm, I'm confident she's going to bring that up here when, when she takes over this summer and just expand the school forest opportunity that the district will have.
Thank you. Carrie, what policies or procedures do you think the school board should have in place to make sure that the best candidates are hired for the teaching positions that are available in the Three Lakes School District?
Well, there's a couple of things. Let me say first that, that our school district here, there were, when we advertised the jobs for the new administrator, we had 28 applications. The rest of the schools around the state were hiring, and about a fourth of them are, are only dealing with getting six or eight or 10. I think that happened because we have a very well-known school, it's a well-respected school, and that's because we're all doing pretty good jobs. I think we're getting good young teachers, and as some of our older teachers have retired or are retiring, but I think that, well and all, we do a pretty good job of getting quality people. I know our past administrator or our current administrator, should have been past administrator, also spent a lot of time worrying about that, and I think all in all, we've done a very good job of it, so I'm not sure there's a lot I change.
Jeff, what policies or procedures do you think should be in place to make sure the district hires the best candidates available?
Yeah, recruiting. We, Three Lakes, like the town chairman candidates mentioned, you know, Three Lakes has got to, is and will should be and will always be a destination place, so with that, we would then recruit top quality, the best teachers that are out there. Again, Terry is going to be fabulous at that. She will network the other people, the administration that is currently in place at the high school, middle school. They need to get in touch with the universities and find out who their best and brightest are and bring them this way. Pay is always, the pay here is very competitive, and that's always a plus for young teachers wanting to start out in this profession, and then finding ways to retain them, keep them here, not have them go back to where they came from, but keep them here.
Carrie, what policies or procedures do you think should be in place to make sure the district hires the best available candidates?
Well, I think that Terry and Jeff alluded to many different things. Terry said we have a great district here, we hire quality people, and that to me is really important. You can teach people skills, you can train people in different areas, but you can't teach people to love students and love the job of teaching our students. You need to hire quality people who are of utmost character, because you can't teach that. And as Jeff said too, you know, getting those people, those, the quality people to stay here and to, you know, be part of our community, I think that's really important.
Thank you. Jeff, is there a point in the classrooms where there's too much technology, and how does the board determine what is too much or too little technology?
Sometimes, is there too much technology in the classroom? Sometimes it may seem that way. I think it, a lot of it would depend on how it's used, what it's used for, is it being used appropriately? And the, the boards, like the school, the school board's role, I believe in that, is we hire, we hire administration to take care of that, set those parameters in which they're used, how they're used, whether used from home, with other schools, with other classrooms. So I think the board helps with the policy, but then the administration would then in turn put that into place, how that should be carried out on a day-to-day basis.
Thank you. Carrie, is there a point where there's too much technology in the classrooms, and what is the board's role in making this determination?
I think technology is part of our students' lives right now, and that's what they're, what they're experiencing. I feel that technology should not take the place of teaching, it should enhance teaching. It definitely does not take the place of the teacher, so, you know, there's a fine line there. But as, as Jeff said, that's, you know, for the, the teacher. The teacher knows that subject area, and if the technology is going to enhance that lesson or those experiences, that activity, that project, then I think we leave it up to the discretion of the teacher. So we're looking back at, you know, we, we hired this person to do this job, so I think we have to rely on those decisions and have that, that teacher, you know, carry out the technology within the classroom. And if, like I said before, we just, we have to realize that technology is part of our students' lives right now, and we have to find a way that it's useful and meaningful to them.
Thank you. Carrie, is there too much technology in the classrooms currently, and what is the board's role in making that determination?
Well, we, a few years ago, gave all of our students computers, and, and we've been very active in that. The funny thing about education is, education to my mind is like a big turtle. They don't take new things aboard very rapidly or fast, and we all know how fast the technology is moving, and if anything, we're racing or trying to catch up to it and stay, if not ahead of it, well, we'll never get ahead of it, but, but stay at least competitively behind it. You got to remember, and we remember, our kids have to survive in this world. Our kids are coping with that, and... Our kids are coping with that, and the truth, should the truth be told, probably all the high school kids in our school know more about computers than the three of us sitting up here. So, and live in that world. And so, we have to take advantage of that, and we have to put ourselves in that world so that they are taking the good parts of that and not taking the bad parts of that.
Thank you. Kerry, should core academics such as language, math, and science be emphasized over electives in the arts?
So, the question is, should they be emphasized?
Yeah.
Well, I think that there are definitely subject areas for students that are a must. Those are the building blocks, and learning in those areas, like especially English language, justice reading, math, those are the building blocks for all other subject areas. However, at the same time, a well-rounded student excels in academics, in arts, and in other elective areas. So, you know, putting precedence on one or the other, I mean, we have to meet requirements for the students to graduate, but we also want to provide those opportunities for the students in their interest areas. And they might go into and be an art teacher, so we don't want to pull those electives away for a student when that's something really of interest to them.
Terry, should core academics such as language, math, and science be emphasized over electives in the arts?
My basic answer is yes, but that's not what's happening in today's schools. And we have our Fab Lab, and I would ask you, who do you think is the biggest user of the Fab Lab at Three Lakes High School? Come on.
Senior.
Art students. Our art program makes extensive use of the Fab Lab, and it's kind of one of those things, you think Fab Lab, you think technology, and I was just stunned when I found out that the art program was the big user there. So, sort of taking something that Kerry said, I mean, we're in a situation where they have to, they have to get a little bit of everything, but we really need to focus on the core subjects as well. I would remind you that we went from an eight-term day to a six-term day about three years ago or maybe four years ago. And one of the objects of that was to try to get back to the basics and give some of the electives more time to prepare, like in chemistry, you have to create the, set the thing up, you do it, and then you have to take it down, and all that's pretty hard to do in 40 or 58 minutes.
Thank you. Jeff, should the core academics of language, math, and science be emphasized over electives in the arts?
I think in order to have a well-rounded student, they all have to be, have equal value. For example, third hour of art class might be the one reason why that student comes to school every day. So, to devalue that over math, but on the flip side, a student that wants to be an engineer needs all those math classes. So, I think the teachers and the administration have to find what makes that student want to come to school, stay in school, and really hone in on that and work on that. So, is one more important than the other? No, because that student might come to school for one reason, and another student might come to school for a different subject, and to put more value on one over the other, I'm not sure that's going to help us with the well-rounded student that we want to produce and then say out into the world. Your thoughts?
Thank you. Terry, what do you feel should be an effective working relationship between the board and the district administrator?
Well, I think it's very obvious. The board sets policy, and that's what we are there for, and we set the policy, we build it in conjunction with the district administrator, and then the district administrator carries out our policy. And we communicate about it. Sometimes, we change the policy because you can't do what we wanted to do from a policy standpoint. Other times, new things come up and new opportunities come up, and the district administrator is the one that sort of brings it up to the board. But it's very, very clear, very clear in governance in schools, the school board sets the policy, and they don't tinker around with the details or execute the policy, that's the district administrator's job.
Jeff, what do you feel should be an effective working relationship between the board and the district administrator?
The relationship that you have with the board and the district administrator is key. I know for a fact that the district administrator that you will be getting in July, Terry Maney, is an outstanding leader. I know for, and then more importantly, she's just a good person. So, once everyone gets to know her and she builds those relationships with the community, with the staff and the students, you're going to see that the policies and the budget that is set, that gets sent to the district administrator to carry out, is probably going to run fairly smooth once she comes on board and gets her, you know, her feet underneath her, what's going on in the district. So, I'm very fortunate here in Three Lakes to have a person of Terry's abilities and leadership coming to Three Lakes.
Kerry, what do you feel should be an effective working relationship between the board and the district administrator?
I feel that the board and the district administrator should have a trusting, working relationship, one of open communication and transparency. Like Terry said, though, the board sets a policy, the district administrator sees or oversees it, that it is carried out. And you entrust that person through the relationship that you have built with that person, with Terry, to carry those policies out. And that's really where transparency, the open communication, the relationship, you rely on that in order, you know, for everything to function really well. And looking forward, and looking back too, I mean, we've had good relationships, and I don't expect anything less from Terry either.
Thank you. That takes care of all the questions that I have. Therefore, we will start the closing statements. Each candidate will be given one minute, and the short, straw draw, Jeff, you could go first.
There's that short, straw draw, Diana. I'd like to thank everyone for taking the time, although, like you said, of their busy schedule, by attending this tonight. This, pretty much whole auditorium here shows that this community really cares about the students and all the stakeholders within the Three Lakes District. I would be honored with your support by voting for me for a position on the Three Lakes School Board. I believe that my 20 years of experience in education will assist in helping the Three Lakes District maintain and continue to strive for the excellence in the Northwoods and in the state of Wisconsin as one of the best districts out there. So, thank you very much for your time, and just, if nothing else, if you don't vote, April. Thank you.
Thank you. Kerry?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight as well. And in closing, I'd like just to say that a great school is the most important aspect in a community. And in addition to caring about our children, I care about our future and the community that I live in. With two children attending Three Lakes currently, I not only have a vested interest in the school, both as a parent and as a taxpayer, and as an educator for 21 years, I bring some unique knowledge and experience to the school board and am able to use that knowledge to make the best decisions in the best interest of the students. I'm a big advocate for providing equitable opportunities for all students, and will continue to strive and achieve that passion as a school board member. And, you know, again, thank you for the opportunity and appreciate your vote on April 2nd.
Thank you. Terry?
Well, we're coming to very difficult times with the new governor and the legislature. They're going to be a train wreck trying to work out the funding for education. I happen to be on board directors for the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. That gives me sort of a seat at the table. It doesn't say I'm going to solve the problems, it doesn't say I want to be great or wonderful, but it does say I have a seat at the table. And coming into these difficult times for money, I just think that my experience, WASB behind me, WASB has three guys that can go lobby, and so we can maybe get some stuff done, but trust me, funding is going to be a huge issue in the next two or three months. Thank you for coming, and I would really appreciate your vote, because I'd like to help this funding thing in Madison for Three Lakes.
Thank you to the candidates for coming. Let's give a nice round of applause and thank all of you.